We have a quorum, so the special FC session for this morning now begins. There are three sessions from nine AM to one oh five PM. And would all members please keep the video cameras on whilst using Zoom? And the microphones will only be switched on upon my instruction. Whilst taking part in the meeting, you must use the virtual background function in Zoom to show the appropriate colors. The purpose of the special FC meetings is to that the funding applications asked for in relation to the estimates for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. And may I remind members that all questions must be directly related to the estimates. And if you want to follow up on the written replies of the administration, please quote the reply number on the top right corner, such as HAB-oh-one. If the member concerned cannot follow up on the written reply of the government, you can ask supplementary questions in writing and submit the written questions to the secretary before the end of today's meeting. And I will limit the members' time to speak for each round. And this is about Home Affairs, and I welcome the Secretary for Home Affairs at his colleagues' meeting. To ensure smooth and orderly conduct of the meeting, I will arrange for members to speak in order. I will first invite, in all fairness, our staff to remove all the raised hand markings in Zoom. All clear? Members, if you want to speak, you can raise your hand now. I will first invite Mr. Chan to deliver his opening remarks, and then the floor will be opened. Mr. Chan, Chairman, members, good morning. I would like to first brief members about the key areas of our work on Home Affairs in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, which are related to the budget. On arts and culture, the National Fourteen-Five-Year Plan supports the development of Hong Kong into an East-meets-West Centre for International Cultural Exchange. To complement this new positioning, the Home Affairs Bureau plans to allocate forty-two million dollars for organizing the first Hong Kong Performing Arts Market within two years to facilitate exchanges among artists, arts and cultural practitioners in the mainland overseas in Hong Kong and expand the trading market of performing arts programs. To further promote arts technology development, we will allocate thirty million dollars to implement the Arts Technology Funding Pilot Scheme, as well as inject an additional one ten million dollars into the Arts Capacity Development Funding Scheme to encourage the nine major performing arts groups, as well as small and medium-sized arts groups to explore the application of arts technology. Moreover, we will provide an annual provision of eighty-five million dollars to support the development of East Kowloon Cultural Centre into a major arts technology incubator, providing structured training. We also set aside seven million dollars to upgrade the facilities of performing arts venues under the Leisure and Cultural Services Department or LCSD. More quality arts productions successfully integrating arts and technology will enhance Hong Kong's standing in the international arts arena. On conservation training, the government will allocate a total of thirty-seven million dollars over the next six financial years, starting from this year, to provide professional training for the conservators of the LCSD and the soon-to-open Hong Kong Palace Museum. We will also increase the number of places under the museum trainee conservation and the summer internship program with an aim to foster the professional development of conservation and museum personnel in Hong Kong. The Cantonese Opera Development Fund will receive an injection of one hundred million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three to further support Cantonese opera practitioners in pursuing their professional advancement and continuous training with a view to facilitating the long-term development of Cantonese opera sector. Popularization of arts can enrich our quality of life. In two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, the LCSD will continue to implement the Community Arts Scheme across the eighteen districts. Starting from the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five financial year, an annual recurrent provision of twenty million dollars will be allocated for the LCSD to collaborate with local, small and medium arts groups and district organizations to curate tailor-made arts activities with the aim of promoting the integration of arts into our community, providing more opportunities for members of the public to take part in arts and cultural activities, thereby enhancing the artistic ambience in the community. On sports, the government has since two thousand and seventeen allocated over sixty billion dollars of new resources to promote sports development in Hong Kong proactively and provide more sports and recreational facilities, among which the Kai-Tech Sports Park, occupying a site of about twenty-eight hectares, aims to provide modern and multipurpose sports and leisure facilities. Its superstructure works and detailed design are underway for target completion in the end of two thousand and twenty-three. In addition, out of the twenty-six projects under the Five-Year Plan for Sports and Recreation Facilities, funding approval has been obtained for twenty-one projects, seven of which are available for public use. We will submit the funding application for the redevelopment of Yuen Long Stadium, bracket main works, in due course, and hope to get the Legislative Council's approval as soon as possible. The HAB has launched a five-year plan to transform more than one hundred and seventy public play spaces under the LCSD across the territory with a view to injecting more innovative and fun elements. The LCSD will encourage and promote community participation and engagement in the process of transforming the public play spaces. The government announced in the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two budget to set aside about three hundred and twenty million dollars to implement a five-year plan for upgrading over seventy football pitches under the management of the LCSD. In two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, the LCSD has commenced improvement works for seventeen pitches, of which nine have been completed. The LCSD will, in consultation with relevant works departments, continue to actively explore the technical feasibility of carrying out the improvement works with a view to implementing the works as soon as possible. Many major international sports events scheduled for two thousand and twenty-one were canceled or postponed due to the pandemic. We have provided a special direct grant with a ceiling of two million dollars for each affected event. We will continue to encourage national sports associations to organize major sports events in Hong Kong. On youth development, the government will continue to work closely with the Youth Development Commission to address young people's concerns about education, career pursuits and home ownership, and encourage their participation in politics, public policy discussion and debate. We'll also put more emphasis in nurturing young people's positive thinking to help them develop positive values so that they may become young individuals with a passion for the motherland and Hong Kong, as well as commitment to serving community. We've set aside sufficient funds for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, and will, subject to the development of the pandemic, take forward various youth development initiatives when it is safe and practical to do so. Chairman, this year marks an important milestone for our city as we celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of Hong Kong's return to the motherland and the establishment of Hong Kong Special Administrative Region. We're organizing a broad range of major celebration events in Hong Kong, the mainland overseas, under the theme of a new era, stability, prosperity, opportunity. We also welcome and encourage various sectors of the community to organize different types of celebration activities for the participation and enjoyment of all. As the pandemic stabilizes and steadily subsides, the celebration events will be gradually rolled out as planned. My colleagues and I are happy to answer questions for members. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, on the Secretary Chan. Nineteen members have indicated that we should speak. Let me read out the order. Chairman Yan, Chairman Sun, Lightong Kwok, Tony Che, Leng Lo Bligh, Michael Tian, Chen Chong Lee, Michael Look, Bill Tang, Tek Ken Kock, Wong Yun San, Kwok Wai Kung, Lok Hau Man, Duncan Chu, Mafon Kwok, Chan Yip Ming, John Eung, Chan Ho Yen, and Chau Man Kwok. We have a long list of members waiting to speak, so each will only have four minutes. Let me remind the administration to be succinct as well, to give more time to members to ask. We start with Ms. Chan Ho Yen. Thank you, Chairman. I'm a member of the National Youth Association, so I'm concerned about youth development in the policy agenda two or program two of the Home Affairs Bureau. It is said that the HAB is responsible for taking forward youth development, including cultivating a sense of identity and love for the country. And I'd like to follow up on the question on HAB-oh-two. We need to be target-oriented, and we need to have some performance indicators. Now, about the Committee on Civic Education, Committee on the Promotion of Civic Education. The committee organizes a range of activities encouraging voluntary participation. However, there is not a existing mechanism or regular mechanism to gauge the effectiveness of these activities. So this is my first follow-up question. The second point. During the epidemic, has the Committee on Promotion of Civic Education held any online activities to promote national education? And if so, may I have the details? And how do you gauge the effectiveness? For example, do you have the viewers' rates? And if not, please give me an explanation. Third point, will you consider discussing with the relevant counterparts on the mainland for more collaboration? I don't see a clear answer from the administration. As a member of the National Youth Association, I don't see a lot of collaborations. Last year in September, with the support of the central authorities, there were eight measures laid out. And yet I have yet to seen close collaboration between the committee and the mainland counterparts. Will you foster stronger collaboration and how much manpower will be reserved on the secretary? Thank you for the questions. Civic education and national education are very important, and we have reserved manpower and resources for this area of work with apparent results. Last year, we allocated eighteen-point-two million dollars on promoting civic education in schools. The committee also subsidized some programs to a tune of seventeen-point-two-five million dollars. It's a value for money, and we have yielded results. We require the relevant organizations to submit to reports, such as evaluation and financial reports. And we also ask for feedback from members of the public and other participants. Over ninety percent of participants agree that these activities are helpful and useful. As for liaison with the mainland, the answer, of course, is in the affirmative. The S A R government on a regular basis leads with the different counterparts and collaborate with them at the provincial, municipal and national level on arts, culture, as well as civic education. You asked about any online activities being held. I'll defer to my deputy secretary, Ms. Tang, to take your question. Thank you, Deputy Secretary. In the beginning of two thousand and twenty, because of the emerging COVID-nineteen epidemic, the three basic law seminars originally scheduled to be held in schools had been held online. The first seminar was uploaded to the Committee on Promotion of Civic Education's website on the twenty-fourth of December. And then last year, on the thirty-first of December, we published an article in a magazine. The second seminar has now completed its video recording, and subject to progress of post-production, the video clip will also be uploaded to the committee's website for broadcasting. The third seminar, we have invited the speaker, and we're ironing out the details and also video shooting. Please debrief, please. And also, concerning the basic law quiz, we organized it last year, and for the extracts, they've also been uploaded onto the C P C East website. Next, Mr. Chairman Sun. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, colleagues. I have three questions. First, well, under outline four, you talk about major activities and for the all-state games. I'd like to know what's the progress? For example, whether or not a task force has been set up to coordinate the relevant parties and whether or not you can also disclose the items that we are participating in, because when it comes to sports, many Hong Kong people favor that. For example, table tennis and also fencing and so on. So if you can disclose the items, then they can also know about it. And also, I've also received a lot of basketball fans, and they said that the current situation is not satisfactory, because they'd like to take part in this. And I understand that you also have a five-year plan for sports development, in particular for team sports, and they'd also like to go out to take part in competitions and so on. So can you explain the details to them? And also, what about the government's plans? And also, is about the Hong Kong Arts or Hong Kong Performing Arts Market, whether or not this M-plus or HKPM? I understand that they are commissioning and would like to have more major events and also expos and so on. So I asked about that under HAB-oh-seven. So not much has been disclosed there, so can more be done at the WKCD so that more activities can be organized? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chang. Three questions. First, on major sports events. Well, we will continue to promote that, but then during the past two years, because of the epidemic, some of these major events have to be canceled. But then there are still some events that have been organized. You also talk about the all-state games. The thanks to the support from the state, we worked together with the Guangdong Province. In two thousand and twenty-five, we're going to organize that games in Hong Kong. And the preparation work is underway, and quite a lot of progress has been made. The Tripartite Group has been making preparation, and I understand that the Sports Commissioner has been working very hard to strive for more activities to be organized here. Yes, you're right. We are also a sports capital, and therefore we are also well-equipped to organize many of these major sports events, in particular, by the end of this year, after the completion of the Kai-Tech Sports Park. We are not just going to have a world-class, high-level or high-standard sports facility. Many events can also be held in Hong Kong. I understand that many people would also like to see more events being held in Hong Kong, for example, for cycling, badminton and so on. These are very popular sports, and also fencing. They very much like to see that held in Hong Kong, and therefore we have been liaising with the state authorities, and some initial consensus has been reached. But then we will also have to look at the state's sports administrations decision. And then as soon as we get an answer, we will announce that with regard to the basketball Asian Cup. I'd be referring to the Sports Commissioner. First, on the performing arts market. Well, some forty million dollars has been spent on organizing that, and would like to hold that within the next two years. That's very important to the positioning of Hong Kong as the arts capital. Because, as you can see, worldwide, some twenty percent, some twenty-three percent of the arts trading has been taking place in Hong Kong, and therefore, would that be organized in Hong Kong, that would definitely be helpful to the promotion of the performing arts market. So please be brief, Sports Commissioner. Yes, on basketball, as soon as the news was announced, we immediately contacted the Basketball Association. And last night, they already wrote to the relevant authority, hoping that that can also be held in Hong Kong. We hope that we can get a satisfactory answer. Next. Mr. Lightong Kwok, thank you, Chairman, for the three new buildings in Hong Kong. They're giving rise to a lot of problems in Hong Kong. And I believe that my question has been asked by many members as well. So I'd like to ask this question, a follow-up on HAB-oh-three-four. In a wake of the epidemic, I understand that the HAB has done a lot of things. So for those three new buildings with needs, they would conduct one-off cleaning for these buildings. But then what they emphasized is that these are just one-off initiatives. They hope that the residents would understand the need for cleanliness so that they'd be able to set up OCs or owners incorporated and so on. And according to the reply by the administration, some fifteen-hundred-ninety-two buildings and some four-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty such cleaning operations have been carried out. So I'd like to know, given the fact that we have such a large number of our three new buildings in Hong Kong, and yet the HAD has only been able to complete some one-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-two buildings, and they emphasize that these are one-off initiatives. And therefore, in terms of the promotion of three new buildings and setting up OCs, what kind of concrete help have you been able to achieve? So is it that, given the funding obtained by the HAD is not adequate to cover all the three new buildings? That's the reason why you've only managed to cover that many buildings? So what kind of cleaning operations are there? In particular, have you helped these three new buildings spray disinfectant so that it can also be disinfectant or sanitization? Paintings and paints have been painted. And after the operation, would you consider rolling that out to all these three new buildings in Hong Kong so that such cleaning operations can be carried out in all those buildings in order to enhance the living environment of residents of these buildings? So can I ask the administration to answer that, please? Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Li, for your question. Well, Mr. Li asked a very important question. That is, well, Hong Kong's buildings are raging. In particular, for these so-called three new buildings, i.e. they don't have OCs, they don't have any property management companies running the buildings, and we have several thousand such buildings in Hong Kong, and the HAD is responsible for building management. So that's one of the major tasks of the HAD every year. We have also put in a lot of resources in dealing with these buildings. We also have dedicated staff in each of the eighteen districts so that I would be working in these buildings. And we would target specifically these three new buildings. What have we done? In fact, we adopt a multi-pronged approach. First, we will try to engage professional property management companies so that they can contact these flat owners so that they can set up OCs as soon as possible. And in fact, we have managed to set up OCs for many of these buildings, and we would also send out ambassadors. So we have also engaged some residentees and ambassadors so that they'd be doing the isn't work for us. And in due course, they can also get the help of the administration. And our district officers would also pay special attention to these three new buildings. And as Mr. Li just said, for the cleaning operations, when we said that is a one-off operation, it doesn't mean that we will not do it again in the future. It's just that it's not a regular operation. But then, where necessary, we can also make use of the pilot program. And many of these three new buildings have been involved. And you talk about the disinfection, painting, painter. We have been doing that for many buildings, and we have also seen the effect. And we would also be putting in more resources into that. In fact, during the epidemic, a lot of resources have been put into helping these three new buildings, in particular. Your residents in these three new buildings, because many of them are from the grassroots, and we'd be giving them surgical masks and also hand sanitizers and so on. So we've been working on that. Next. Yes, Mr. Tony Che. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on HAB-oh-zero-five and also twenty-five. On zero-zero-five, as Chairman, you know, that in any area, we have a shortage of spots and recreational facilities. And in some cases, the facilities are very backward. And in two thousand and seventeen, the administration set aside twenty billion dollars in the promotion of the Five-Year Plan for Sports and Recreation Facilities. And in many districts, you've been looking into that. And according to the administration, in some twenty areas, you've been working on some projects. And as the administration just said, you'd be applying for funding for some of these facilities. But what about the remaining four? Has there been any progress? Because initially, they've been included in the Five-Year Plan, and yet five years have elapsed. How come the progress is still so slow? And you also talk about the fifteen feasibility studies, and some five have been completed, and some fifteen are still outstanding. You said that you'd be rolling out full steam. So I've been criticizing the administration. What does that mean? So what is the actual timing for completion? When can you complete all those? So can you give us an account on that? Next is about the youth hostel. It's even worse, because in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, it was mentioned in the policy address, and you introduced that. And it's been ten years now, and you've only been able to complete one. And three are still being built, and three others are still outstanding. So they are still waiting for a decision. Ten years have elapsed. So even for the young people, then, they have already become middle-aged. And of course, for those in charge, it's not you, Secretary. So so, given the fact that they face so miserably, they should have been fired. So what is the progress so far? Thank you, Chairman. Well, first, on sports facilities and then on youth hostel. For the twenty-six involved in the Five-Year Plan, some twenty-one have already got funding from the council. And out of those, some twenty have been tabled before this council by myself. And during the last term, we managed to get your support. And some seventeen, some seven have been commissioned, and then for the remaining fifteen, they are under construction. And then for the remaining one, what the Yuen Long Playground is one of them, or the Yuen Long Stadium is to be built, and we'll be going to the PWSC shortly. And for the remaining handful of them, we'd be working on them full steam. But then, as Mr. Chair understands it, when it comes to public works projects, very often, we might not be able to control the speed of development. For example, in Area Thirty-three in Taipu, for the soccer pitch there, because we have taken on board members' comments, and there are also suggestions that we should have a car park. And therefore, very often, upon the finalization of the project, some of these will have to be delayed in light of public demands, because there was demand for public parking space. And because we'd like to add that in, and that's the reason why there was a delay. And then for the other programs, most of them have been completed. As to youth hostels altogether, there are seven. One is in Taipu Po-Hung Road, and it's already in use. It's been in use for two years, and it's been running very well. And for the next one was sixteen-hundred spaces. And that hostel should also be commissioned shortly. And then for the two, they've already been tabled before FC, and that's the Chongwa Group of Hospitals, such as Young One hostel, and also the Delphi Associations hostel in Jordan. And there is also another one. Well, we'll be discussing that at the HA panel, and we'll be getting member support for that. And if we are able to get that, I will be going to the FC shortly. Well, for these youth hostels, it's not easy to do it. One of the important One of the important tasks is that we need to have an appropriate NGO. They will have to have a site which is idle. And they also, they are also interested in running a youth hostel and they are also able to do it. So the four conditions are not that easy to meet.
Next, Mr. Leng Yopai. Thank you Chairman. I have two follow-up questions. First, I'd like to follow up on H A B zero four six about district youth network. I understand from the administration's reply. That you have one million dollar budget for eighteen district youth. And that worked with ninety thousand attend participants in the five hundred youth activities organizing districts. I want to know whether you have any specific performance indicators for these activities. And also, all eighteen districts have their own district development, youth development networks. But do you have? Any. Collaboration among these district youth networks or D Y Ns for young people to know more about other districts. Also. Through D Y Ns. Do you invite young people to give suggestions on public? Policy and also actually be oh three eight and oh two oh. I'd like to ask about youth exchange programs with the mainland. Because of the epidemic, some of these exchange programs have been suspended. Will you consider allocating the budget to other internship or exchange programs locally so that? Before we resume quarantine-free travel with the mainland, we can give young people the experience. For them to be integrated in the Greater Bay Area. Secretary, thank you, Mr. Leng for the questions. I understand that for district youth networks, apart from holding district activities. These networks also liaise with each other and they hold joint programs as well. Now, similar to other. Activities, they need to first submit a proposal. And after the activity has been held, they are required to submit various reports to prove the effectiveness of these activities. Mr. Leng asked whether we can have more cross-district collaboration. This is a good idea. And Mr. Leng also said that through. D Y Ns, young people can be consulted on various topics. So that they will have a platform to put forward their ideas. Again, these are good suggestions. We should make good use of the eighteen district youth networks. It's very useful. Mr. Leng also referred to resources for exchange programs. It's true, we have set aside resources for youth organizations to apply. For the organization of exchange tours. But in the past two years, because of the COVID pandemic, these exchanges have been suspended. Meanwhile, we allow the subvented organizations to make use of these resources to hold online activities. So whilst young people are unable to go back to the mainland or travel overseas in person. Resources are available. Through various channels in order to benefit them. For example, we have online activities and other activities that can be held locally. Next, Mr. Michael Tang. Thank you Chairman. Chairman, two questions. The first one is about oh two nine eight. The Greater Bay Area Employment Scheme has attracted so many applications and yet at the end of the day, only a few applicants succeeded. I'd like to give my thoughts on the matter. I hope that you can take the initiative and help with the matching process. It's just like a job matching. You also, you need to increase number of places. Clearly, there is a strong demand from graduates on the G B A jobs. So if you have only two thousand places with so many applications, then it doesn't. It is insufficient. The other point is about the Tokyo Games. Hong Kong athletes had a very good result. And yet there are other issues. As far as management is concerned, for example, in terms of design of uniforms, selection of athletes. And also financial management of the sports associations. And in fact, recently, the Basketball Association reviewed that there was a lack. Our men's basketball association reviewed that there was a lack of communication and it's really astonishing. We have heard similar scandals before. So. When it comes to review of the sports sector, are you going to take forward review of the governance of N S A? It's not just about subventions. About the Youth Employment Scheme for the Greater Bay Area, the, or the Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme. Altogether, four hundred and seventeen enterprises took part in our scheme since its rollout last year. Many of them are major or large-scale enterprises. We received a lot of applications. We have twin, two thousand places and if resources permit. And if. Upon review, the scheme is deemed effective, we will increase the number of quotas. Why so few successful applicants? Because it takes time for the recruitment process to be completed. We have registered quite some successful applications. So how many do you know? For the figures I have at hand, one thousand one hundred. So that's really not many. Well, Mr. Tang, we're talking about four hundred and seventeen enterprises. And if you want to recruit the staff, you need to go through interviews and the relevant steps. We've spent seventy million dollars on the scheme, right? You know, the figure one thousand one hundred, it has remained so for a long time. Yes, but we must take note of the pandemic and a lot of initiatives relating to the Greater Bay Area have been affected. On the issue of athletes. We are very happy to see that our athletes have won medals in various major sports events. With the support of the government S C and the Hong Kong Sports Institute. We have put in quite a lot of resources on elite, elite athletes. But can you respond to my point about review of the governance of N S A's? Yes, we do keep in view on a regular basis sports development and reviewing N S A's is one of our directions of review. Through review, we. Plan to enhance the governance structure of N S A's and the effectiveness. What about the structure? Yes, it's included. Yes, we have mentioned N S A, the structure governance. And on sports technology, we also put in a lot of resources on athlete, elite athletes. Before the recess, the Legislative Council approved the setup of, setting up of a fund to a tune of three hundred million dollars. To provide resources on a matching basis with the jockey club on the development of sports technology. The ratio of funding is one point, one hundred and fifty million each. I'd like to follow up on the question I put forward earlier, H A B zero zero three. Because of the pandemic, the number of participants for the funding scheme for youth exchange, the mainland and funding scheme for youth internship in the mainland. Have both been zero. I understand that. And yet they attracted quite a hefty expenditure. In twenty twenty-one for the F Y E, F S Y M, there was an expenditure of twenty-four million and then F S Y I M thirty-six million. Can you explain? What the expenditure entailed, that's on a reimbursement basis. And according to the reply in H A B zero zero three. Subject to the development of the pandemic, we will resume the projects only when it's safe and practical to do so. Of course, it's right. But can you tell us exactly, under what circumstances will the projects be resumed? And will you resume the projects? Bit by bit progressively? And will you start with mainland projects or overseas projects? Secretary, thank you, Mr. Rock Chan for your question. And you are correct, in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, because of the pandemic. We were unable to implement youth exchange programs with the mainland. Yet the funding schemes still attracted expenditure. Now, that's how things run. We have implemented the youth exchange programs in the mainland for many years. We should not only consider the snapshot in a single year. The schemes are implemented on a rolling basis. Of course, if you have activities, you incur expenditure. And after an activity, we need to, we need the participants to say submit reports. And share their experience. And only when they have completed the tasks would they be given. The subsidy on a reimbursement basis. After the activities have been concluded in twenty nineteen, because of the pandemic in twenty twenty. They were unable to continue with the outstanding tasks such as sharing of experience and submission of reports. When they failed to submit reports, they couldn't get the subsidy. And that is why in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, the expenditure incurred. Actually referred to the expenditure that had been dispersed late as a result of the pandemic. So it's on a rolling basis and we have. Been monitoring. And urging the participating organizations to submit reports as soon as possible. And yet, for these reasons, they have yet to submit reports and we've continued to take them to task. As a resumption of these projects, we have reserved thirty-five million dollars. So that within this financial year, we can resume exchange programs with the mainland. When the epidemic situation stabilizes, we should be able to resume the projects and as announced by the government. Starting the twenty-first of April. Some of the social distancing measures will be relaxed. So these exchange programs will be resumed as well as the pandemic stabilizes. However, which projects will resume first depends very much on the epidemic situation of the destinations. Mr. Michael, look. I'd like to follow up on questions that I put, that is H A B zero one seven. That is about promoting family core values and family education. It seems from the administration's reply that the government attaches importance to family core values, but not so much on family education. And the administration only quoted some general publicity effort such as a storytelling competition. And publication of a storybook and also an online platform setup and some APIs. I want to explain what family education is about. There is a so-called this term and that is working, that is a parenting. Duties, education, that is, parents should be taught a set of skills and knowledge on. Raising their children and that. They should help children and young people form positive values and good habits.
Well, last year. We did have. This idea of adopting a piece of legislation on promoting family harmony. We'd like the administration to set up a mechanism to support the family, that is to help people. Do the parenting work properly. And of course, the H A B might have a specific role in this. Well, they might have for that, it should have been the duties of the L A. Of the Labor Bureau or the Education Bureau, but then it should have been the H A B doing the job. So my question for the Bureau Director is that when it comes to promoting family education or parenting education. So what are you going to do? So you need to give us a concrete help and support so that you can also educate the parents as to how they should teach the children. Of bringing up their kids. Thank you for your question. It's a very important subject. Family education is indeed very serious and important. So we have to give more importance to the idea of a family. Because family is definitely the core of our values and therefore we have to provide full support to the family. And we would also need to strengthen our family education. What the family council is doing is that we emphasize, we emphasize on three things, respect and harmony and also communication. So those are the core values of family. And through the family council, we've been doing a lot of. Support or providing a lot of support to the families. One of the things is that we would make sure that all government initiatives and policies before they are rolled out, we will have to see. If that would have any impact on family core values. So every policy bureau would have to come up with this paragraph. Dedicating to the impact on family core values. And if there is any negative impact, either they would have to be withdrawn. Or they would have to do something to mitigate the impact. So we have done a lot of work. On family education as well. So family council is not just about coming up with the policy to help us. It has also conducted a lot of researchers on family. Education, including parenting work. For example. Through our support for the family, we have also sponsored a number of pilot programs, in particular parenting education. In twenty sixteen seventeen, we did four parenting. Studies. And then in twenty seventeen eighteen, we also did another four studies on parents and parenting work, as you said. So it's about the stress on parents and also. Targeting the problem of divorce in Hong Kong. We also did a study on divorced families and also education for remarried families. And also, we would also have to, have to help our families where one or two, both parents have been divorced. So that's what we've been doing. Next, Mr. Bill Tang. Mr. Bill Tang. Well, he might be temporarily away. Next, Mr. Fok Kai Kong. Thank you, Kenneth Clark, Kenneth Fok. Thank you, Bureau Director. Thank you for listening to the views from the sector. And you've also commissioned many sports and recreation venues and many people are now able to go back to work. And a couple of days ago, I received messages from those constituents and I'm very pleased about this. I'd like to follow up on H A B zero one two. And according to the administration, well, for the sponsorship for the five-year plan for sports and recreational facilities. Well, that has been increased. And I think that shows the government's prudent attitude in spending. And then for the hundred and fifty million dollars or hundred and thirty million dollars, so about thirty million dollars will have to be spent later. I think it's a very good plan because it has been very effective in promoting the team sports and also the income of the athletes. And I think that would also have a positive impact on the athletes. So can you promise that this plan or program can be continued? And also can you promise that with regard to the team sports program, can it be made a regular program? And also can it be extended to other teams or some, other than the performance or results? Well, with the development of team sports, that would also help the young people to develop mutual. Well, with the development of team sports, that would also help the young people to develop mutual respect and also cooperation. So that's the cooperation spirit that matters. And therefore, I'd like to spend the next minute on this because many members have also talked about the basketball court, basketball court association, some attitude towards the mega sports event and they decided later that they'd like to join again. So we hope that the administration can talk to the stakeholders to make sure that this will not happen again. It's not just about this one-off incident. We would like to prevent this from happening again in the future. And I understand that you've been talking to these basketball stakeholders in the last couple of days. Would like to understand that more about this. We hope that this will not happen again in the future. And I think communication is something that you need to work on. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Fok, for your question. And I'm grateful to Mr. Fok. You also talk about the commissioning of venues. You've given us a lot of views. And we have managed to reopen some of these spots and cultural venues on the tenth of April so that arts and culture workers can continue to do the rehearsals and training can also be provided in particular. We are going to have the university students games and also the Asian Games that will be held this summer. So these are very pleasant news to us. And thanks to the support from the sector. With regard to team sports, there's also a very important initiative from the administration. We have spent some seventy million dollars to help these team sports athletes so that they can do better through some reward schemes and incentive schemes if they're able to win awards. They can also get ten, up to ten million dollars as an award. And then for the remaining details, I'll refer to the Sports Commission. Thank you. For the five-year development program for team sports. Well, under the LCSD, there is a sponsor, a sponsor sponsorship scheme and also the H K S I has also got this up elite athletes program. And we would also be targeting team sports center under the five-year development program would be targeting the twenty eighteen Asian Games and also the Hangzhou Games. And we'll be reviewing the result afterwards. As to how much we can to sponsor them and also whether or not the sports items are to be included and excluded and so on. We'll do a review after the event has been held. I hope that you would not just be looking at the result because you would also have to look at the social effects or benefits. Next, Mr. Wong Yun San.
Thank you. Thank you, Bureau Director. I'd like to follow up on H A B zero five nine. It's about arts technology in particular. On arts technology, you're going to have a pilot program. And I'd like to know what you're going to do. And will you be reporting to the arts technology commission or committee in particular? Should it be the relevant committee or the H A B, which will be responsible for that? And also what about the blueprint? So is it the responsibility under the under the H A B or should it be the Advisory Committee on Arts Development? And what does it mean by arts technology? Is it that you'd be interpreting arts via technology? Or is it that you're going to introduce new technologies to ensure that arts can also be done more expeditiously? And you are also offering this to the nine major performing arts group, but what about creative industries that are facing the market? So can they also be included? Thank you. Thank you for your question on arts technology. Well, this is something very new and it's also one of our policies. And of course, the H A B being the Bureau are responsible for that, this is under our purview. And therefore, on arts technology, the advisory committee is also under our purview. And we have put in a lot of resources in promoting arts technologies development. And of course, for this year, we're going to put in thirty million dollars. And we're going to kickstart the pilot program on arts technology sponsorship, that is arts technology funding pilot scheme. And nine M P Hs will be supported. It's not just the nine M P Hs. What is small and medium-sized groups, they can also be supported, some ten billion dollars under the pilot program would also be used on these groups. So through this sponsorship, they can also take part in arts technology development. And some eighty five million dollars would also be set aside so that every year, these are new resources for the LCSD. So that they can also use the resources on the shortly commissioned E K C C, that is the East Carlin Cultural Center and an E K C C Academy for Arts Technology would also be set up. And that's the resources that we're going to put into developing this. Other than that, it's not just the art sector that will be working with us. This is a very important task. The technology sector's involvement is also very important. And therefore, in the process of formulating this policy and also the concrete initiatives, it's not just the art sector that has been working with us. We are also being seen closely with the technology sector. So I'll be referring to the incumbent secretary who will share with us the collaboration between us and the arts and technology sectors. Please be brief. Thank you. Thank you for the question. In fact, we have echoed the call by the chief executive in her policy address in twenty twenty. That is, under the different policy bureaus, there would be funds and some hundred million dollars has been set aside for that purpose. And that would include the creative fund under the, the C. That is the creator. Are the creative initiative under the C S I and so on. In terms of collaboration and exchange with the sector through the LCSD during the past year or so, different exchange sessions have been organized and also some of the seminars have been arranged so that the arts and culture sector can work with us as to how technology can be used in arts creation and innovation. Thank you. Before the next member speaks, I'd like to say that we will have to spend some time in allowing for another team to join us. So I can only allow for us a couple more members to speak before we wrap up our meeting. And then for the other members, I apologize, we would not be able to allow you to speak because of the time constraint. Next, Mr. Huai Kam.
Thank you, Chairman. There are two questions. First, on building management. As we know, because of the epidemic, many buildings have not been able to organize the annual O C meeting. So I'd like to know how many buildings have not been able to have their new meeting because of the epidemic. And also can you disclose the information? Will you be able to reopen some of the facilities and venues or premises so that they can have their owners some meetings there? Because all along, they've been relying on community halls under the H A B in organizing such meetings. So will the H A B be helping them? So that for these O Cs that have yet been able to convene their annual meetings. So under the current situation, will they be able to convene their annual meetings in order to resolve some of the issues that they are involved in? And also, H A B seventeen, that's a question raised by Mr. Lu Chong Hong and Mr. Lu already asked about our family education. That's very important. And I can see in your reply that in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, twenty two, well, the family council managed to get twenty five million dollars for that. And then in twenty two, twenty three, you're talking about twenty five million dollars already. In other words, you intend to do a lot of work in the coming year. So I'd like to know a bit more about this. That is the twenty five point six one million dollars to be earmarked for that. And what about the effectiveness of such activities? And you said that in twenty twenty one, you also completed the a survey on family situations. And then in the fourth quarter this year, you're going to release the latest figures.
My question is that will your family survey include the impact of long working hours on family life?
Secretary, thank you, Chairman. On the two questions, I'll first answer the question on family council and then for the annual general meeting in relation to building management, I'll defer to the Home Affairs Department. We have deployed some twenty million dollars on family education with focus on a number of areas. We have a fam, a commendation scheme for family-friendly employers. And that is, we commend employers to place emphasis on family-friendly employment practices. Over three thousand employers take part in the scheme. And some six, six hundred thousand employees are involved. The next point is a pilot scheme and again, we provide subsidies. We have a family day, for example. And as I mentioned just now, we also have a number of studies relating to family issues such as family education and parenting duties. About the family survey, as mentioned by the honorable member, the survey is underway. The survey involves a lot of interviews. And there are also interviews with people who are familiar with the family education. Because of the pandemic, our work has somewhat slowed down and I reckon that it will need some more time. As for long working hours and the pressure put on family life, of course, this is true. And that is why we have the commendation scheme for family-friendly employers. Because it would encourage employers to be more understanding and draw up family-friendly employment practices. So it's will also be included in the family survey. As for AGMs, I'll defer to my colleague. We're running out of time, so please be succinct. Thank you, Chairman. Indeed, because of the pandemic, some AGMs for O Cs have been suspended, but we do not keep statistics on the number of AGMs canceled or postponed. Once the epidemic ends, when the community centers and other community halls can reopen, the O Cs can approach our district representatives for such meetings. Mr. Lo Kao Man.
Thank you, Chairman. Secretary. I'd like to follow up on H A B zero oh nine. I asked a question about the expenditure on the youth development initiative and the timetable in terms of career pursuits, education, homeownership, so on and so forth. And then according to the administration, focus will now be placed on cultivating positive thinking and positive values among young people so that they have a passion for the motherland and for Hong Kong. I am all for this revised direction. Because apart from the existing youth development initiatives, they also need to work on cultivating a sense of belonging to the country. And that according to the administration, they will work on helping young people with education, career, homeownership, and also participation in politics, policy discussion, debate. And that means the assistance we've provided on furthering studies, employment, etc. So I believe that the administration is placing a lot of focus on career pursuit. Can you also tell us in the coming year, what resources are set aside to help achieve other goals in your youth development initiatives such as education, homeownership, and also participation in politics, public policy discussion, debate?
Secretary, thank you for the question. And thank you, Mr. Lu, for supporting our initiative and the objective. Apart from education, career and homeownership, we also need to cultivate a sense of positive thinking among young people and to make sure that they have a passion for the motherland, Hong Kong, and contribute to society. In twenty nineteen, during the Black Cat Riot, I mean, after the Black Cat Riot, we had to step up our effort to nurture young people's positive thinking so that they develop positive values and enable them to have a sense of responsibility and love for the country. So it's not just about education, career and homeownership and politics, policy discussion, debate. It's not just about furthering their studies or seeking employment. We're talking about the whole person development and how they should have positive thinking. That means cross-bureau collaboration. Not only the H A B is involved, the Education Bureau is also working with us. Apart from the Home Affairs Bureau and the Youth Development Commission, we also have representatives from other bureaus. And in answering members' questions, we highlight the exchange programs with the mainland which is beneficial for our young people in learning more about their country. The exchange tours or internship opportunities on the mainland are also very important for them to cultivate positive thinking. On positive values, we have new initiatives. For example, we have outdoor adventure activities based on a specific theme. And this also helps cultivate young people's positive thinking and positive values towards life. And that's one key area of youth development. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through. Please switch on Mr. Lu's mic.
Just a very briefly, please. Yes. The H A B is doing a good job. The Y D C also does a good job for youth hostel scheme. You, you managed to meet the target three thousand places. So you need to spend more resources to fulfill the youth development objectives. Mr. Duncan Chu. A follow-up question on H A B zero zero seven about the Greater Bay Area Youth Empowerment Scheme and the funding scheme for youth entrepreneurship. In fact, I asked a similar question in a previous session. Let me declare that I invest in a G B A company as an incubator and a startup. So my question is this, do we have clear K P I's for the funding scheme? I was one of the panel judges. And I would read projects and proposals. And if they win the bid, they get funding. Now, some companies have already been set up. They're doing business. And that in midst of the pandemic, they're not required to go to the G B A cities. They are somewhat stranded in Hong Kong. So in what aspect are we helping these young entrepreneurs? And according to successful applicants, the N G Os involved are not having the entrepreneurial spirit. And for a three-year scheme, they have not visited any G B A city. And there is no further assistance upon conclusion of the scheme. So I don't think the K P I's are clear enough. Mr. Ten also mentioned another point about one thousand one hundred successful applicants out of some twenty thousand applications, whereas you have some three thousand places. out of some twenty thousand applications where you have some three thousand places under the Greater Bay Area Youth Empowerment Scheme. I think it has to do with mismatch between employers and employees. For some job positions, you can't even employ somebody middle-aged, let alone young people. Say for openings such as analysts, these are not jobs suitable for our young people. You need to make sure that the jobs are properly matched. Another point, Mr. Wong's question, I don't think you've answered the question. What is the K P I for arts technology? Is it art tech or tech art? And again, you have organizations involved, but you need to come up with clear K P I's. Secretary, about the youth entrepreneurial ship. We have deployed one hundred and thirty million dollars to help young people start their businesses in the Greater Bay Area. And we successfully subsidized sixteen non-governmental organizations. These are experienced organizations. Unlike what Mr. Duncan Chu said, as he said, they are not experienced. I understand the sixteen subsidized N G Os are experienced in helping youth entrepreneurs and startups and local universities also help young people start businesses in the mainland. They have experience, not to mention chambers of commerce. I'm sure they are experienced. And all these sixteen organizations have completed recruitment. Altogether, two hundred and thirty project teams are ready. And like Mr. Duncan Chu said, some of these projects or startups have actually begun conducting business involving over a hundred youth entrepreneurs. Apart from young entrepreneurs, we also have four thousand interns benefiting from the thematic youth internship scheme or the mainland youth internship programs. And we'll continue to deploy resources as for the K P I's. I think apparently, the success or failure of startup would tell. So that's a very clear K P I. Our first step is to help them set up their business. That's the top priority. And so the Greater Bay Area Youth Empowerment Scheme, as I replied to Mr. Tian, we have some three thousand openings of various job nature. We want to provide greater flexibility. Some jobs are tailor-made for young people, some are not. But we also have a diversity of of youths. And the, in fact, the scheme has been well received. Like Mr. Chu said, we received over ten thousand applications. So there is support of the scheme from our young people. I'm sorry, Secretary. And we also have a hundred job openings for local university students to take up internship at Cyberport. How about your reply in writing to Mr. Chu and Mr. Tian's question on Greater Bay Area? Next, Mr. Ma Feng Kwok.
Mr. Ma Feng Kwok. Thank you, Chairman. Am I coming through? I'd like to follow up on H A B zero two one, on sports development. It's always been the government strategy to develop sports in three areas. Supporting elite sports is one of the highlights of the government's policy. Now, for the budget in the coming year, I see increase in the promoting sports and community and holding major international sports events. For example, in twenty twenty one, in supporting elite sports, the estimate was nine hundred and seventy one. But in the coming year, the estimate will only be nine hundred and five million dollars. May I know why there is a crunch on the budget available? Because the Hangzhou Asian Games will be held. And we need to be prepared for the twenty twenty five National Games. So in terms of supporting elite sports, why do we have less resources?
Well, the administration said that they're going to conduct a study on commercialization. So when will it start? And when will it be completed? And when will the stakeholders' views be reflected in this study? Another thing is about the industrialization of the sports sector. Well, we need to do it with the sector's involvement and looking at overseas experience. A major corporation supporter would be necessary. In particular, they would also have to organize their own teams in taking part in competitions. And they would also need sponsorships so that athletes can get better rewards for their hard work. So what's the view of the administration on this? How are you going to mobilize the business sector so that they can be more involved? I can also see some improvements. For example, for the Olympic Games, with better results, more commercial organizations would be prepared to sponsor them. But then, in this regard, how can you mobilize more involvement from the business sector? Okay, please be precise and concise. Thank you for your question on the athlete development and also the further commercialization of this. Well, you talk about recurrent spending. In fact, on our spending on elite athletes' development, it's not just about our recurrent spending. Much of it is through direct injection of resources. For example, through the Sports Development Fund, we would directly inject funds to support athletes' developments. And as I said in my earlier reply, earlier on, we managed to get three hundred million dollars for the development of sports and not some technology. And we have also got the support from this council for a new building to be developed for the H K S I. But these are not recurrent spending. But Mr. Ma was asking about regular or recurrent spending. In fact, since last year, we have also injected a lot of funds for elite athlete development. For example, for a full-time athlete, they would also be able to get higher pay. So more resources would be put into developing elite athletes. So, Mr. Ma, please stress the show that we're going to do this with commercialization. Yes, the business sector's collaboration is very important. And we are very pleased that many corporations in Hong Kong are prepared to support our elite athletes. As you can see, for Olympic Games, the prize money has also been greatly increased. That shows that our business sector is very ready to support them. With regard to the commercialization study, I'd like to defer to the Sports Commissioner. I hope that it won't take twenty thirty years. We have already started the study and the consultant is now engaging the stakeholders, including those from the sports sector. We have also set up some focus groups so that there would be one-on-one interviews before the end of June. We hope to be able to have some results. Next, Mr. Chen Guiling, Ms. Chen Guiling. Thank you, Chairman. So I'd like to follow up on H A B zero thirty six. So it's about environmental improvement. You said that the relevant departments will be monitoring the progress of rural public works and also the progress of these projects. Well, rural public works are part of what it takes for Hong Kong to become an international or cosmopolitan city. Rural development should not be marginalized. I hope that you can promise that more projects can be undertaken every year. We have twenty seven rural villages. And if you look at the hundred and fifty such places, in fact, the competition is very fierce. And if such works are progressed, are lagging behind, then what remedial measures can be taken? And also, are there any projects that are costing less than fifty million dollars? That is the upper limit. And also, H A B zero thirty seven is about anti-epidemic resources in the rural areas. And if you're going to do this, are you able to coordinate the work in the rural areas? How can you ensure that for the remote areas, so that the subdivided flats, tenants, and so on, will be able to get the resources? So will you be able to tell us what is making it hard for you to reach out to these residents? Yes, I understand that Ms. Chen is very concerned about the LPW projects. Please rest assured that we will continue to put in resources for that so that when it comes to the LPW projects annually, we're going to spend a hundred and sixty million dollars on that. And we will continue to put in resources for that because LPW projects are very important to us. It's not just going to benefit the villages. Hong Kong as a whole can benefit from it because Hong Kong residents would also go to these areas for hiking and so on. And we have been working very hard to speed up the progress. And we hope that villagers can also work with us in order to ensure that we will continue with this program. So I'll see if my colleagues would like to supplement on this. With regard to the epidemic, well, during the last couple of years, our village representatives have been working with us very closely. And we are very grateful to the B R's for working with us during this period. And earlier on, a lot of anti-epidemic resources or packs have been sent to the rural areas, including face masks and also hand sanitizers and so on. With regard to the anti-epidemic packages, the Hong Kong Eco and also the rural committees have been working with us and they have helped us with distributing the tens of thousands of packages to the villages in the rural areas. So we are very grateful for their efforts. We will continue to do that. So I'll refer to the H A D colleagues who will give us more details about this LPW projects or programs. Thank you, Chairman. With regard to the progress of the LPW program, for twenty twenty two twenty three, a hundred and fifty seven projects are included. And there are some seventy three newly added projects. So old ones are being completed and new ones have been added in. And we'll be monitoring closely the progress of these works projects. Ms. Chen also asked about, asked if there are projects that are costing more than fifty million dollars. In fact, most of these projects are minor works in nature. And we hope that you can give us more input so that we can also include some worthy projects which might cost more. So we'll be more than prepared to consider them. We have exceeded our time limit by some three minutes. So I, so we'll be adjourned the session now and then the next session will start shortly. Thank you.